Clerk, would you please call the roll to ascertain the presence of a quorum?
Counselor Baker. Counselor Campbell. Counselor Siomo. Counselor Sabi George. Counsel Flaherty. Counselor Jackson. Counsel Lamatina. Counsel Linehan. Counsel McCarthy. Counsel O'Malley. Counselor Presley. Counselor Wu. And Counsel Zakem. And Counsel Baker? We have a quorum, Madam President.
Okay, Counselor O'Malley is at the podium to introduce our clergy today, but before doing so, I want to make sure that we take the opportunity to congratulate him on his recent wedding this past Saturday. And so now if everyone would please rise and join our newly married man as he introduces today's very special clergy.
Thank you, Madam President. It is my true delight and honor to welcome no stranger to this chamber, the Reverend Laura Everett. I don't believe she was here last year, but several years ago she came and really gave a wonderfully impassioned, strong opening prayer. She is also a newlywed, so congratulations to you, Laura. Everett is the executive director of the Mass Council of Churches. She's a resident of Jamaica Plain and an ordained minister in the United Church of Christ, UCC. She's a member of JP's Hope Central Church, a graduate of Brown University and Harvard Divinity School, as well as she completed the Foundations of Christian Leadership Program at Duke University. She is also a habitual user of Boston's free sunscreen in the parks as a fellow redhead. And I think her Twitter bio best encapsulates this wonderful friend and dear person, spiritual leader, quote, "Pastor, skirt suit aficionado, bike commuting yogi," and my favorite part, "New Jersey by birth, Massachusetts by choice." Ladies and gentlemen, let's hear it for Reverend Laura Everett.
Marriages are not simply the joining of two people, but the joining of entire families and whole communities. I invite you to join me in giving thanks for the sign of love and devotion that is the marriage of Matt and Catherine. May your days be blessed and your love overflow to heal our world. Giving glory to God and honor to the city council and staff, I want to reflect for just a moment on God's preferential option for the city. For those of us who try to follow the path of Jesus of Nazareth, our scriptures are woven through with stories of cities. The Bible is a story of city after city after city again and again. God seems invested in God's people living in close proximity with people who appear unlike us. You know this, the Israelites wander in the desert looking for a home, a city of refuge. Mary of the city of Nazareth sings of a God who flips the privilege of divided cities to a God who casts the mighty from their thrones and raises up the lowly. Paul travels back and forth between Rome and Corinth, Philippi and Ephesus. And the most popular story about neighborliness, the Good Samaritan, is a story where the violence doesn't happen in the city, but in the place in between, that desolate road between Jericho and Jerusalem. To restore the stranger to health, the Good Samaritan brings him to a city. Scripture might start in a garden, but it ends in a city. In popular culture, the vision of heaven is of snowy white clouds and rolling hills, more Berkshires than Boston. But in scripture, in the Book of Revelation, the vision of heaven is decidedly urban. "Then I saw a new heaven and a new earth. For the first heaven and the first earth has passed away, and the sea was no more, and I saw a holy city, the new Jerusalem, come down." See, the home of God is among mortals. God will dwell with them. They will be God's people, and God will be with them. God will wipe every tear from their eyes. Death will be no more. Mourning and crying and pain will be no more, for the first things have passed away. This is the city we long for and the city that you built, the city where mourning and crying and pain have passed away. And so all of you, you who do this holy work of guiding us ever closer to that urban vision, a beautiful city, where not just some of the people, not just some who can afford it, but all of God's people thrive. As you attend to the work of ensuring that all Bostonians have the chance to live and flourish, especially those who are still looking for detox and recovery beds, I want to end by praying the full version of the Serenity Prayer, which has been a lifeline for those in 12-step recovery programs. We've come to know the shorter version of this, but like any good Bostonian, I can make this about Massachusetts. It was actually, the full version was actually written by Reinhold Niebuhr, a Protestant theologian who wrote the prayer for a sermon at Heath Evangelical Union Church in Heath, Massachusetts as early as 1934. So I will pray this prayer, and if you know these words, join me. "God, give us the grace to accept with serenity the things that cannot be changed; courage to change the things which should be changed; and the wisdom to distinguish the one from the other. Living one day at a time, enjoying one moment at a time, accepting hardship as a pathway to peace, taking as Jesus did the sinful world as it is, not as I would have it to be; trusting that you will make all things right if I surrender my will to you, so that I may be reasonably happy in this life and supremely happy with you forever in the next." May the blessing of God who guides our work and guards our city be with all of you who do the holy work of asking this way. Let the people say amen. Thank you so much, Reverend Laura. Really beautiful, nourishing as well. And now, please, Counselor O'Malley, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the republic.
And now on to formal business. If there are no objections, the minutes from last week's meeting will stand approved. Seeing and hearing none, the minutes are approved. Communications from His Honor, the mayor, Madam Clerk.
Docket number 0689, message and order for the confirmation of the reappointment of Joanna Bench Aalto as a member of the Audit Committee for a five-year term ending June 16, 2021.
Chair recognizes the Chair of the Committee on Ways and Means, Counselor Siomo.
Thank you, Madam President. I distributed the resume of Joanne Bench Aalto to everyone. She's been serving on the Audit Committee for the past five years. Her term expires June 16 of this year. So not to prevent a backlog here, I asked for suspension and pass for Joanne to continue to serve on the Audit Committee. Her qualifications are impeccable if you look at her resume. Thank you.
Counselor O'Malley, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to echo the call from the Ways and Means Chair. Joanna is a friend, a constituent, someone I've known literally my whole life, and she is the consummate professional. She's done wonderful work in her first term on the board, hopefully her continued service to the city for many, many years to come. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor O'Malley. Counselor Jackson, you have the floor.
I concur with my two previous colleagues. I think Joanna is absolutely awesome, and I think we are lucky to have her in her eyes on the dollars in the city of Boston. And I look forward to voting in affirmative.
Thank you, Counselor Jackson. At this time, Counselor Siomo moves for suspension of the rules and passage of docket 0689. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed say nay. Docket 0689 has been passed, and Joanna Aalto has been confirmed, her reappointment has been confirmed to the Audit Committee. Petitions, memorials, and remonstrances, Madam Clerk. Oh, and please note that Counsel McCarthy is here.
Docket number 0690, petition of Dattco Transportation for a license to operate motor vehicles for the carriage of passengers for hire over certain streets in Boston.
Docket number 0690 will be assigned to the Committee on Parks, Recreation, and Transportation. Reports of public officers and others.
Docket number 0691, communication from Counselors Linehan and Wu regarding the urban renewal agreement between the City Council and the Boston Redevelopment Authority.
Counsel Linehan, would you like to say? Okay. The letter is in your files, and docket 0691 will be placed on file.
Docket number 0692, the constable bonds of the following have been duly approved by the collective treasurer, were received and approved. Carol Alston, Cheryl Atkins, Stephen Batris, Paul Burns, James Booteleri, James Capuccio, Sheila Calvallieri, Robert Chan, Leslie Christos, John Connors, Carol Conroy, John Consolo, Edwin Cronin, James Darby, Sheila Dabi, Deborah DiGirrellamo, Charles Donovan, Stephanie Ellis, Iris Figueroa, James, Jason Grant, Joshua Hanley, Regina Hansen, Peter Kenny, Daniel Long, Christopher McNally, Paul McNally Jr., Rizmaldi Nova, Brian Olivier, Leonard Pucci, Puccia, Julia Scott, Patricia Sheets, Michael Slavin, Yolanda Thomas, George White, and Terrence Yancey.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Again, this is another batch of individuals who have been, whose constable designation has been approved, and now this is for the constable bonds for them to perform the job. So at this time, the Chair moves for suspension of the rules and passage of docket 0692 to be approved under the usual terms and conditions. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed say nay. Docket 0692 has been approved under the usual terms and conditions. And Madam Clerk, would you please read 0693 through 0699, please?
Thank you, Madam President. 0693, communication was received from the city clerk with the filing by the Boston Redevelopment Authority of the report and decision on the application of the Cote Village Chapter 121A project. Docket number 0694, notice as you see from the mayor of the appointment of Natalia Tracy as a member of the Living Wage Advisory Committee for a term expiring May 1, 2019. Docket number 0695, notice as you see from the mayor of the appointment of Robert Gallary as a member of the Boston Public Library Board of Trustees for a term expiring April 30, 2021. Docket number 0691, notice as you see from the mayor of the appointment of Evelyn Arana Ortiz as a member of the Boston Public Library Board of Trustees for a term expiring May 1, 2021. Docket number 0697, notice as you see from the city clerk in accordance with Chapter 6 of the ordinances of 1979 regarding actions taken by the mayor on papers acted upon by the city council at its meeting of April 13, 2016. Docket number 0698, notice as you see from the auditing department providing a list of fiscal 2016 reallocations made by the mayor prior to April 15, 2016 for the purpose of continuing operations. And docket number 0699, communication was received from Brian P. Golden, Director of the Boston Redevelopment Authority regarding proposed minor modifications to urban renewal plan.
Docket numbers 0693 through 0699 will be placed on file. Reports of committees, Madam Clerk.
Docket number 0272, the Committee on Government Operations, to which was referred on February 10, 2016, docket number 0272, order accepting the provisions of the Massachusetts Community Preservation Act submits a report recommending the order ought to pass.
Chair recognizes the Chair of the Committee on Government Operations, Counsel Flaherty.
Thank you, Madam President. Docket 0272 is adopting the Community Preservation Act. We held a hearing on March 29, and most recently, a working session on May 2 with the Commission of Assessing, Ron Rackout, to discuss specific questions related to the surcharge on property tax bills and the exemptions that the CPA would offer certain property owners, particularly our seniors and those low to moderate, to the moderate population. To be clear, voting yes on docket 0272 will be placing the Community Preservation Act on the ballot this November for voters to ultimately decide as to whether they want to adopt the CPA. I believe voters should have a say in whether they would like to contribute 1% of a surcharge of the annual property taxes to fund preservation efforts, parks and open space, senior housing, veteran housing, building of affordable housing. So if the CPA does receive a favorable vote in November, the city council would then come back to the city council, and the city council would then draft an ordinance that would appoint members to the CPA committee and also outline the process by which the projects are approved and the funds are spent. So I would like to take this opportunity to thank my co-sponsor, City Council Andrea Campbell, for her partnership in this effort, as well as all the advocates that have been at this a very long time. If I had my druthers, we would have passed this thing back in 2001, 2002, but I'm often taking the floor, saying that we should have done this and we should have done that. Like yesterday, 3-1-1, we should have had 3-1-1 10 years ago when Brian Honan and Mike Ross had put it forward. But nonetheless, it's here. There's an opportunity for us to take a stand and hopefully get it on the ballot and make sure that the voters have an opportunity to weigh in and hopefully restore very precious funds for very worthy and needy causes. So with that, I'm moving for passage, but would like an opportunity through the Chair to allow my co-sponsor an opportunity to address the body as well before we move for a vote. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Counsel Flaherty. Counsel Campbell, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Counsel Flaherty. I think you summed it up well, so I will be very brief. I want to thank you for your steadfast leadership on this issue. I want to thank the advocates, the coalition members who have been sticking with this for a really long time. Now the fight will begin, and I'm excited to join you in those efforts. I look forward to going, if it passes favorably, going community by community to talk about the costs, and more importantly, the benefits. And I think once we have those conversations, everyone will see that this is the best thing the city of Boston could do going forward. So thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Counsel Flaherty. And thank you, my colleagues as well.
Thank you, Counsel Campbell. Counsel Jackson, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I want to give huge kudos to the sponsors, Counsel Flaherty as well as Counsel Campbell. This is great work. I think, first off, this is democracy, because what we're voting on today is actually allowing people to vote and to determine what they want to do. And so we're actually not taking a stand today in terms of what direction this should be. This opens the door for the 650,000 residents of the city to do what they want relative to this. We're voting for financial prudence. A dollar in means more than a dollar out, which most often, and looking at the education budget, very rarely does that happen versus what's happening here today. And then, in addition, open space, historic preservation, and affordable housing, allowing our city of Boston to actually continue to be a city that is not only a city for really rich people, but for people who are working families and get to stay here. So this is really a really great opportunity to claim all of those things, actually in the name of democracy in the city of Boston. Huge kudos to a great coalition of people who care about this. And I look forward to knocking doors, losing a little bit of weight doing that, and ensuring that we get this across the finish line. Again, kudos to my colleagues as well as the coalition, including someone who was my, was my elementary Bible study teacher. I got a little choked up. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counsel Jackson. Counsel Linehan, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I rise to commend the Chair and the co-sponsor on this particular matter. I will be probably the only dissenting vote here today. As I've articulated throughout this exercise, that I believe that we as a city rely too much on property tax for our revenue. And I think that we need to collectively to take on the responsibility of finding new ways in generating revenue for our city. This in no way positions me against preservation, which I support, parks, which I have green blood, affordable housing, which I would argue much of, a lot of affordable housing is built throughout my district. I just think I'd prefer to increase the budget by $12, $15 million to put it in and find appropriate revenue sources other than more property tax. I think it's an anomaly when the voter has the opportunity to weigh in on tax matters. It's not, we are elected representatives to make these tough decisions and to work on behalf of the people. So I will not be supporting this. It's really a protest vote and really an articulation of, let's change the rules on where we generate our revenue. Because property tax is extremely overburdened, and the state, who has virtually cut their commitment to us in half, cut it in half in a percentage of our total budget, is, it's kind of a carrot for us to vote for this. I don't trust them to come up with the amount of money that they say they will. And the more we participate, all municipalities, especially the capital city, that percentage will dissipate. But those are realities, and I just wanted to use this opportunity to articulate them. Again, I appreciate the work of our body and our leadership, as well as the advocates for what they're advocating for. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Linehan. At this time, Counselor Flaherty moves for passage, acceptance of the committee report and passage of docket 0272. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed say nay. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll on docket 0272?
Counsel Baker. Counsel Baker, yes. Counsel Campbell. Counsel Campbell, yes. Counsel Siomo. Counsel Siomo, yes. Counsel Sabi George. Counsel Sabi George, yes. Counsel Flaherty. Counsel Flaherty, yes. Counsel Jackson. Counsel Jackson, yes. Counsel Lamatina. Counsel Lamatina, yes. Counsel Linehan. Counsel Linehan, no. Counsel McCarthy. Counsel McCarthy, yes. Counsel O'Malley. Counsel O'Malley, yes. Counsel Presley. Counsel Presley, yes. Counsel Wu, yes. Counsel Wu, yes. And Counsel Zakem. Counsel Zakem, yes. Madam President, we have 12 votes to the affirmative on docket number 0272.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Docket number 0272 has passed with a 12 to 1 vote. Adders recently heard for possible action, Madam Clerk. And would you please read the first two dockets together?
Thank you. Docket number 0525, orders from FY17 operating budget, including annual appropriation and tax order, annual appropriation for school department, and appropriation for other post-employment benefits known as OPEB. Docket number 0534 through 0543, orders for the FY17 capital budget, including loan orders and lease and purchase agreements.
Dockets numbers 0525 through 0532 and 0534 through 0543 will remain in the Committee on Ways and Means.
Docket number 0583, order for hearing to discuss Boston Public Schools' social studies and history class offerings.
Chair recognizes the Chair of the Committee on Education, Counsel Jackson.
Thank you very much. I want to thank folks for coming to this hearing. Very important hearing because the Boston Public Schools is actually sadly retreating from the real need and commitment for social studies. Most of the individuals who are teaching social studies and history classes actually don't have the certification to teach social studies and histories classes. In addition, social studies and history has been replaced in many schools by humanities. Interestingly, the city of Boston doesn't actually have a humanities department. And so therefore, there is not actual consistency from school to school. So if you were to transfer, as about 20% of Boston Public School students do, you would actually enter into a new or different curriculum. We, in the city of Boston, have an over $1 billion history industry. As many of us see, and as Counsel McCarthy brought up about a week ago, more people come to Faneuil Hall than they do Disney. And so we have a huge influx of people based on the historic aspects of the city. We need to have young people who understand the context in which they actually live in. And history and social studies are a critical component. We really look forward to additional hearings or potentially a working group on how we can deal with this topic and ensure that, in particular, 7th and 8th graders who are not receiving history now are actually able to receive a history from 7th through 11th grade. Thank you so much, Madam President. And if this could remain in the committee and be placed on file, that'd be great.
Thank you, Counsel Jackson. Counsel Presley, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I just rise to commend the maker. I thought it a very informative hearing. You know, I think there's a tendency sometimes, I'll just, you know, say for myself, I notice in debates, we're often talking about our schools in very wide brushes, teachers, students, facilities. And so I found it incredibly informative because we should be thinking in a very customized way and very specifically as to the unique contributions that each teacher offers according to the discipline and also what their unique challenges are. And we certainly should not need to debate the merits of knowing history and teaching history. That has everything to do with engagement, empowerment, and what I think is most important, and obviously, education, but that, you know, our schools are not just about creating successful learners. It's also about creating good citizens. And all of that has to do with knowing your history. And I've said it before and I'll say it again, we cannot expect our young people at the age of 18 to spontaneously combust and suddenly care about their neighborhood, their city, and their relationship with government because now they can legally vote. We should be perpetuating and fostering and cultivating that relationship much earlier. And that definitely begins with the engagement, the education, and the empowerment that comes from knowing your history. So I just rise to commend the maker for that important hearing.
Thank you, Counsel Presley. Counsel Sabi George, you have the floor.
Thank you so much, and thank you to the Chair for calling a hearing on this order. I had the great privilege to wrap up the end of our meeting and here take testimony from the remaining panel members and public testimony. One of my greatest takeaways, and something I never explicitly learned or understood on my own as a high school teacher, was the definition of social studies. And for me, this hearing gave me clarity on that. And really, the teaching and the understanding or the learning to understand complex issues is what I know now as the definition of social studies and why it's so important to teach that to our kids. It was wonderful to welcome students from many schools across the city, to hear their impression of the importance of learning civics, of experiencing multitude of classes in sort of the history realm and the social studies realm, to hear from our teachers that are working so hard to make sure that history and social studies and civics remain an important part of our classroom, and to make sure that they remain an important part of a whole classroom of history as opposed to a humanities class, which combines history and English language arts. It was also very exciting to hear from our nonprofit partners, those that work with our schools, day in, day out, to really connect our classrooms, what's happening in sort of a isolated academic setting with what's happening in the real world, what's happening along our streets of Boston in such an important way. And to include the folks from the Constitution Museum, USS Constitution Museum, it was exciting and so happy to have been a part of it and to be able to hear all of the testimonies. and to be able to hear all of the testimony that day. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Sabi George. Docket number 0583 will be placed on file. Madam Clerk, would you please read dockets 0555 through 0557 together?
Docket number 0555, message and order authorizing Boston Fire Department Academy to reestablish, in accordance with General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 53E and a half, a revolving fund to accept from the fund up to a maximum of $100,000 to fund fiscal year 2017 to support Boston Fire Department's participation in the detection, cleanup, and containment of hazardous material release. Docket number 0556, message and order authorizing Boston Fire Academy to reestablish, in accordance with General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 53E and a half, a revolving fund to accept from the fund up to a maximum of $100,000 to fund fiscal year 2017 to support training programs for firefighters from non-city-of-Boston-fire agencies. The academy will charge participating outside agencies tuition for each firefighter recruit they send to the academy. And docket number 0557, message and order authorizing the Boston Fire Department Academy to reestablish, in accordance with General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 53E and a half, a revolving fund to accept from the fund up to a maximum of $25,000 to fund fiscal year 2017 to support Boston Fire Department's personnel participating in the detection, cleanup, and containment costs associated with Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 21E, the Massachusetts Oil and Hazardous Material Release and Prevention and Response Act.
Dockets 0555 through 0557 will remain in the Committee on Ways and Means.
Docket number 0412, ordinance establishing language and communication access for city services.
Chair recognizes the Chair of the Committee on Government Operations, Council Flaherty.
I have, Madam Chair, Madam President, we had a very productive hearing yesterday. We learned from a number of different advocates on the linguistic as well as the disability side. This matter of masking will remain in committee for a possible working session, what we learned from the hearing and the need to be a little bit more inclusive as well as to get input from the advocates as well as a panel of attorneys that were here yesterday. So it probably behooves us to put into working session, but also through your great efforts and Council McCarthy's great efforts as the lead sponsor, the line of questioning from both of you and our other colleagues leads to additional questions, as well as the spirit of cooperation that we were receiving from the administration. They had a pretty elaborate panel of directors and commissioners yesterday that all offered input with respect to their respective departments. So clearly a work in progress, but I know that great effort has gone in through a series of hearings and previous working sessions that both you and Council McCarthy have held. So this will be a continuum of them. But it seems to me, from my perspective, that the light is at the end of the tunnel and it's just a matter of putting some finer touches on that ordinance. So remaining committee and we'll defer to either yourself or to Council McCarthy as the co-lead sponsors. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Council Flaherty. Docket number 0412 will remain in the Committee on Government Operations.
Docket number 0386, order for hearing to review the Boston Public Schools' strategic partnership contract.
Chair recognizes the Chair of the Committee on Education, Council Jackson.
Really interesting hearing. $48 million is actually spent in contracts in the Boston Public School budget. About $8 million of that 48 million was not required to actually have RFPs. Prior to this hearing and the announcement from the school administration to this hearing, they actually were able to, from a discretionary way, determine who their partners were and how that money was allocated. I was very happy to hear that Superintendent Tommy Chang has actually now changed the procedures. And that $8 million, which next year will be $6.6 million, that money is actually going to be RFPed. We can look forward to more transparency, more accountability for those dollars. I still have, I think we still have some work to do to drill down on where those dollars have gone in the past, who they've gone to, and what the actual outcome has been. We also have a nonprofit called the BEDF, which is a nonprofit fund of dollars that actually get allocated to help the schools. There's a 10%, about a 10% fee that schools would have to pay if they have money go through that fund. And in addition, about $10 million actually goes through that fund on an annual basis. We need to understand where those dollars are going, even though they fall outside of the responsibility of the technical budget. Those dollars are actually flowing for Boston Public Schools. And we need to get those folks in here and let us know and open up the books and determine where those dollars are going. I think it was a very good hearing. We got to hear a lot more about how things are done, but actually, more importantly, that things are going to be done in a more transparent and accountable fashion in the future. And if that could stay in committee, we're actually going to pick that one up again also. And I look forward to having the folks from FinCom actually come in and testify on this also because I think they could actually shed some light. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Council Jackson. Docket number 0386 will remain in the Committee on Education. Motion, orders, and resolutions, Madam Clerk.
Docket number 0700, Council Jackson offered the following order that Rule 34 of the 2016-2017 City Council Rules be suspended on May 18, 2016 in order to have a meeting on the Committee on Education.
Council Jackson, you have the floor.
This is actually, and I want to thank two of the newest councilors on the council who are stepping it up. And I believe Council Sabi George, this is her second Wednesday that she wants to do a hearing. And also for Council Campbell, this is actually an urgent hearing. It's an urgent hearing based on the issues of water in the Boston Public Schools. We can't wait anymore and we can't allow our young people to be potentially exposed to water that is unhealthy and unsafe. 12 of you actually signed on to state that we should put the pause button on allowing water fountains to be used. And so we definitely need to forge forward on this and ensure that our young people are safe. And I want to thank the two sponsors and really look forward to passage of this. It just allows us to be able to do our meeting, I'm sorry, our hearing on a Wednesday. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Council Jackson. At this time, Council Jackson moves, before we vote, Council Sabi George, you have the floor.
Thank you so much. Thank you for the opportunity to address you all again. I would like to thank my two cosponsors, Council Campbell and Council Presley, for signing on to this hearing order and for the Chair asking for suspension of Rule 34. This is an important issue, obviously, and that's why it was almost two months ago that we called for this hearing order. And due to our incredibly robust schedule of budget hearings that are incredibly important, we do ask the council to allow us to hold this next Wednesday. We appreciate that opportunity and look forward to working with all of you, looking forward to working with the administration and Boston Public Schools to make sure that we do have or our children have access to safe drinking water in all of our Boston Public Schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Sabi George. Council Linehan, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I must have an antagonism going on inside. I just feel that it's important to remind folks that this particular rule is in place so that we focus on the meeting of the day, which is the council meeting each Wednesday. So I just want to remind folks going forward, that's why Rule 34 is in place. I know this is a very busy season and I will support, you know, this particular request. I also feel that it is an urgent matter and that it needs to be addressed. But just to remind councils going forward, traditionally, the day is about the city council meeting. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Council Linehan. So again, to clarify for the public or anyone who's watching, Rule 34 of the Council Rules says that Wednesdays are reserved specifically for the council, formal council session and no hearings. So we would be voting to suspend a different rule of the council to allow us to take this matter up the same day it was filed and then vote on whether we are able to waive Rule 34 for next Wednesday. Would anyone else like to speak on this matter? Okay. At this time, Council Jackson moves for suspension of the rules and passage of docket 0700. All those in favor say aye? Any opposed say nay? Docket 0700 has been passed. Personnel orders, Madam Clerk.
Docket number 0701, Council Wu for Council Campbell offered the following order.
Council Campbell moves for suspension and passage of docket 0701. All those in favor say aye? Any opposed say nay? Docket 0701 has been passed.
Docket number 0702, Council Wu for Council Campbell offered the following order.
Council Campbell moves for suspension and passage of docket 0702. All those in favor say aye? Any opposed say nay? Docket 0702 has been passed. Before we get to the green sheets, there are two late filed matters in the hands of the clerk, which in the absence of objection will be added to the agenda. Hearing no objection, the matters are added. And Madam Clerk, would you, if you could please read the first late filed matter?
Offered by Councilor Timothy McCarthy, order for hearing regarding the ban of the sale of hoverboards in the city of Boston. Whereas the hoverboard is the latest craze to hit the market and since hoverboards have been available for sale, there have been, there has been much concern regarding the safety of this product. There have been multiple reports of fires, explosions, accidents, and injuries associated with this device, the latest fire taking place in the north end of Boston. Therefore, be it ordered that the appropriate committee of the Boston City Council hold a hearing to discuss the ban on sales or restricted use of hoverboards in the city of Boston. The mayor's office, the inspectional service department, Boston Public Health Commission, and other interested parties will be invited to attend. Filed May 11, 2016.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Council McCarthy, you have the floor.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. And I apologize for late file. I'm not a big fan of late files. But since the inception of the sale of these hoverboards, there's been multiple accounts of the devices catching fire and blowing up. In addition to the fires and explosions, we've had emergency room visits throughout Boston and the injuries have been skyrocketing. These injuries include fractures and sprains, contusions, lacerations, organ injuries, head injuries. And, you know, I'm not one to put everybody in a bubble. I'm a skier. I get it. Like, I enjoy sports and even collision sports. But the safety that, the issue that I have is the explosions and the fires that they're causing. In January of this year, the Consumer Protection Safety Commission opened an investigation involving dozens of fires because of these hoverboards. They're calling it a priority investigation. And currently, there are no uniform safety standards for this product. The most recent fire occurred in the north end and it was our own Stevie Paskett Philly from Boston Transportation Department that dodged, you know, possibly a very serious incident and possible serious injury to Stevie and his lovely family. The country's three major airlines, they no longer allowed them on planes. There was a flame out in the Delta hangar because of one of these hoverboards. I don't know if we need to ban them, but I certainly know that we need to take a closer look at these devices and the appropriate uses of these devices, especially these devices in public areas. We currently regulate the use of segways and Council Lamatina sponsored that bill on June 15 of 2011. And I see that this is very similar to what Council Lamatina did, minus the fact that segways aren't blowing up in people's closets and in people's bedrooms. So I look forward to a hearing of the possible restriction of the use of these devices. Thank you.
Thank you, Council McCarthy. The first late filed, oh, Madam Clerk, would you please add Council Lamatina's name? Please add Council Jackson, Council Linehan, Council Siomo, Council Sabi George, Council Flaherty. The first late filed matter will be assigned to the Committee on Parks, Recreation, and Transportation. And Madam Clerk, if you would please read the second late filed matter.
Offered by Councilors Frank Baker and Bill Linehan in the city of Boston City Council, order for hearing regarding proposed minor modifications to the South End Urban Renewal Plan Project, number MassAVR-56, with respect to parcel 48B.
Council Linehan, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. This particular late file is, you know, why don't I read part of our letter? That's why I didn't comment on it earlier. A letter that the President and I sent on behalf of really all of us to the Director of the BRA. Per our agreement of March 23, 2016, the City Council approved a six-year extension to 14 urban renewal zones with a number of provisos and procedural changes going forward. One such proviso was the BRA's agreement to appear at review hearings twice per year and along the progress of these planning of the urban renewal activities. But one of the other matters that we spoke of was that when they wanted to have a minor modification, that we could call them down to a hearing to decide whether we felt that the final modification, minor modification, would be appropriate. So this particular parcel, most of you know it. It's the Flower Exchange. It's a huge development parcel, one that can change the entire landscape down there on the Albany Street corridor. So Councilor Baker and I felt that it was important that we have a hearing immediately on this particular matter. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Linehan. Council Baker, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. We're just, in response to calls and emails, Council Linehan and I, I just trying to support the South End community. There were major concerns, as we all remember back when the whole urban renewal discussion was going on. was going on, so like Belichick says, we're just doing our jobs. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Baker. The second late filed matter will be assigned to the Committee on Planning and Development. And there are no late filed matters for the consent agenda. So at this time, the Chair moves adoption of the consent agenda. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed say nay. The ayes have it, and the consent agenda is adopted. At this time, would anyone like to pull a matter from the green sheets? Counselor Sabi George.
Thank you, Madam President. I ask for unanimous consent to address the council on the hearing regarding our partners in substance use disorders, docket number 483, page 4 of 17.
Seeing no objection, please proceed. And actually, as the committee chair, you're able to pull the docket on your own anyway. So we will now be discussing docket, could you repeat the number again?
483, page 4 of 17.
Docket 0483 on page 4 of 17 in the green sheets. Madam Clerk, would you please read the docket into the record?
Thank you, Madam President. In the Committee of Homelessness, Mental Health, and Recovery, docket number 0483, sponsored by Counselor Sabi George, an order for hearing regarding our partners in the fight against substance use disorders. It was referred to the committee on March 30, 2016. There was a hearing held on May 4, 2016.
Thank you. I would just like to give a quick summary of some of the key points that came out of our meeting from Wednesday, May 4. And I'd like to thank the committee's Vice Chair, Tim McCarthy, and Councillors Linehan, Baker, Presley, and O'Malley for also participating in this hearing. Our goal was to find ways to optimize delivery of services along the continuum of care focused on prevention, intervention, treatment, and recovery, as well as the transitional phases between each of those continuum of care stops along the way of care, and to learn really how our system is working and how it's, and some of the ways it's not working. A number of groups testified, both city agencies, the Office of Recovery Services, some of our nonprofit partners and organizations, including a particular shout-out to the Austin Brighton Substance Abuse Task Force, and private partners. A Leggett group came and testified about some of the obstacles they face delivering care to the residents of the City of Boston. One of the greatest moments, I think, was from our own Boston Fire Department's EAP faith program and some of the work they do, not to just outreach to their own members, but the outreach that they give to residents that they may have encountered through an overdose call, and the support that they give to those families of those residents. We learned certainly for the need for, that the need for help outpaces the available services, and that some parents have called more than 25 providers as they look for help for their children and their loved ones. And much of that is due to insurance limitations, and money and space and staff all are in short supply. On the positive side, Boston is the first nation, first city in the nation to have an Office of Recovery Services, and we look forward to strengthening the work of that office in relation to substance use disorders. I look forward to continuing this conversation with the help of Counselor McCarthy, and ask that this remain in the committee. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Sabi George. Counselor Linehan, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I rise to commend the Chair and the sponsor. She did an extraordinary job on a very difficult and complicated matter, one that we are all facing the impacts of every single day. I just, some, the three main focuses of services to substance abuse is prevention, intervention, and actual substance abuse services and care, long-term care. And we stretched two and a half, three-hour hearing out to really cover that entire scope. And someone who's actively involved in all of this, I learn something almost every five, 10 minutes. The voids are immense, the complexity and the need for coordination is huge, the lack of commitment, financial commitment and resources at all of these levels was apparent. And I think that as the rest of the governments try to move forward in trying to find, resolve, well, not resolve, but at least have a greater impact on substance abuse and addiction, that we continue to strive here in this body. We're doing some of the important work. I want to commend Jack Kelly of my office, working with the Chair on the, a lot of the matters related to this and recruiting some of the folks who attend. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Linehan. Counselor Baker, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to thank Anissa Counselor George for this hearing. And I just want a couple of opinions, I'm going through it right now. There's a couple of things structurally that I believe that we're doing wrong in this system. The way, when most of the people that were going in for treatment 30 and 40 years ago were going in for alcohol, we're treating people the same way. We still have five-to-seven-day detoxes, which, if people are familiar with anybody on heroin, five to seven days is just enough time to get them out, to get them out, and they're still very sick individuals. We have to be looking at 30-day lockdown facilities. And another big problem, I think, with the way we're treating people, and it seems to be growing and growing, and you hear all the experts and the doctors talking about this is the way, this is the way, is replacement therapy. Suboxone, methadone, it works for some people, but there's a lot of people out there that are very, very sick. And I just think that people should be aware of these things, that when they're going into these seven-day detoxes, five-day detoxes, it's replace, it's not come off it and try to come off it. It's here, take this to make you feel better for that. And I just think that we should at least be able to have the discussions to get away from that model and not be ostracized and looked at like we don't know what we're talking about. I've been down this road a lot with a lot of people in my life, and methadone is a lifelong, a lifelong sentence also. It just happens to be legal now. So I just wanted to get that out there. There's some, there's a lot, a lot of discussion going on, and I want the discussion to be about 30-day facilities. That initial piece going, when people are on heroin, if it's not 30 days, we're chasing these people. We talk about not enough beds. There's not enough beds because the same people are cycling in and out and in and out, and it's the same people in those beds. And again, this is all my opinion, and thank you for listening to me.
Thank you, Counselor Baker. Docket number 0483 will remain in the Committee on Homelessness, Mental Health, and Recovery. Anyone else want to pull a matter from the green sheets? Anyone else wishing to make a statement or address the council? All right. At this time, if everyone would please rise, and the council will prepare to adjourn today's meeting in memory of the following individuals. For Counselor Baker and Counselor Sabi George, Maureen Griffin. For Counselor Baker, Joan Lanane. For Counselor Siomo, Antonio Tony Arena. And for Counselor Lamatina, Anthony DiSimone, Francis M. Gaeta, and Helen McDonough. A moment of silence, please. Thank you. Chair moves at this time that the council adjourns in memory of the aforementioned individuals to meet again on Wednesday, May 18, at 12 noon. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed say nay. The ayes have it, the council is adjourned.